And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, and could we please have our moment of silence for those affected by the COVID? Okay, thank you. Selectmen Dowling will be late this evening. She had an emergency. Okay, so on our agenda, we're here to review the warrant articles for the special town meeting of October 28th, 2021. Okay, the first article is Article 46. And you've all been through this before, right? So you know, we can vote to place, we can vote to place and support, or we can vote not to place. Okay, so Article 46 is to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money to pay costs of designing, engineering, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a renovated and expanded senior center to be located at 480 Main Street, and for the payment of all, of any and all incidental and related costs, including but not limited to demolition and site preparation, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, and that any borrowing approved for this project shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a debt exclusion question in accordance with General Law, Chapter 49, Paragraph 21-C-K, also known as Proposition Two and a Half. The Board of Selectmen and any other appropriate officials of the town are authorized to apply for federal, state, or private grants, enter into any agreements, and execute all documents, including contracts for a term in excess of three years, as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and to accept any gifts or grants provided to the town for such purposes, or take any action relative thereto. Now Jeff, we'll be closing the warrant, but we'll have to open it up to put money amounts in, right?
Yeah, you'll see these again on Monday, at your Monday meeting, and hopefully we'll have the dollars figures in here. We're waiting on two numbers. One, the cost of issuance of the bonds, we're nailing that down, and then the builder's risk insurance amount.
Okay. Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
I would vote to place and support, unless anybody wants to discuss it further.
Oh, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I move to place and support. The article has written, subject to additional information.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to add something. We are proposing in the town meeting and in the ballot, the full amount of the project. We anticipate that we will receive donations, we'll have grant opportunities, we have a conversation with the CPC tomorrow night about if they can make contributions, but for the purpose of the warrant and the purpose of the authorization of debt, we'll ask for the full amount.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's four. Zero enough. Okay, the next article is Article 47, multi-use recreational field design and construction. See if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay costs of designing, engineering, constructing, and equipping ball fields for the payment of any and all incidental and related costs, to determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, and that any borrowing approved for this project shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a debt exclusion question in accordance with General Law, Chapter 59, Paragraph 21-C-K, also known as Proposition Two and a Half. The Board and any other appropriate officials of the town are authorized to apply for federal, state, or private grants, enter into any agreements, and execute all documents, including contracts, for a term in excess of three years, as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and to accept any gifts or grants provided to the town for such purposes, or to take any action thereto. Okay, any questions from the board?
I have some discussion and a question on this one. The first being, it's no secret the horse track wants to build four fields now, and give us full control. I would feel more comfortable with this article with one of two things. The first being, either it goes after the horse track, or the second being, we hold this article until our regular town meeting in June. Because if we're going to get four fields for free, I'd have a tough time asking for the $4 million on top of that.
I see your point on that, but the thing is, the timelines on them are so different. I assume that the REC has been working on this proposal, and would like to move forward now, instead of waiting until June. And the fields for the equestrian place, that's a big if, and it's pretty far down.
I know, I just, I'm struggling with it because...
Yeah. Annie?
I just wanted to add a comment or two. So Chase, something that we've talked about is how both projects together will help us meet our end goal from studies, or from the needs identified in 2007 study. But I'm not sure, that was the first time I've heard the warrant language, and I don't know if it referenced the full recreation area enhancement, so it's a much larger project than just the ball field. So I'm not sure if you have any questions on that. But it's a full recreation enhancement for all of our ADA upgrades, plus the parking. So that is, we're very hopeful the equestrian project will ultimately move forward, and it would be a huge benefit to the town. But even together, both projects are only meeting a need that was identified in 2007, but it's our opportunity to meet a need now, within the next three years, for both the multipurpose need in town, but as well as all of the enhancements we're bringing to the REC area.
Oh, I agree, and I'm for the, I'm for this project. I just want to give you the best chance to succeed, and I think you're going to have a lot of people in the audience saying, well, wait a minute, what's coming up next, we don't have to pay for? And there's going to be a lot of people, I think, that hold on this, hoping that the horse track goes through.
Mm-hmm.
And if this went after the horse track, you'd have a lot of people saying, hey, that horse track didn't go through, we need a field, let's go for this.
Ian?
I agree to some extent with Chase, and there's been other things that have been brought up about this project, and then also the combination of the improvements as combined with the field. I think if we could separate the ADA compliance and the upgrades that are due for the REC from the field, that we would definitely, it'd be a slam dunk. Obviously, everybody can agree, we want to make our field, we want to make our current recreational areas safer and more compliant, but I think lumping in this field may cause those things to be defeated as well. So I don't know where we stand on possibly separating the two.
Have them broken out? Do you have a breakout on them?
No. We've been working on, well, to be able to separate it, the parking is designed specifically for the ball field, you have to change the project significantly, but not a simple deletion.
Jamie? Yeah, I tend to agree. I think that, you know, the strength of the voices from the community at the senior center meeting, coupled with the kind of concerns Chase making, and sort of the line item approach that Ian's sort of putting out there, might make sense. Because what I don't want to see happen is that we don't, we miss our opportunity here, because, you know, because these are questions that I have, and we are more engaged than most people in the town. So, yeah, no, I tend to, I think, holding it or addressing it in that manner probably is, probably going to end up being best for giving it its most likely, making it most likely passable, if that makes any sense.
Okay. Of course, talking about input from the community, it hasn't been too much, other than the neighborhood input from the community.
Sure, that's true.
And we'll get that at a meeting, whatever meeting. Jeff, your thoughts?
Two, I would strike the word "ball field," and insert after ball, and insert after "equipping," a multi-use field, and accessory structures and improvements. I would add that to the paragraph. Whether or not you have it in this order on the warrant, that's up for you to decide, but I support the project, and I think we ought to vote on it. I think the town meeting ought to vote on it. I think, you know, fields are fields. We're not going to be able to get more study money, we don't have another spot in town. But, you know, REC's pushing for this article.
A lot of parents pushing for the article, too.
I agree, I agree with placing it, too, because there has been a lot of work that's brought it to this point.
Right. So Jeff, could you...
We can switch it.
Okay. So now that the order is switched, does somebody want to make a motion on Article 47, which will be...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, with the words that Jeff added.
I will make a motion to place and support forty-eight, with the words that Jeff added.
Okay.
It's going to be...
It's going to become forty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Chase's motion.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so Jeff, you said that this is the opportunity, and we're going to lose the funds. Can you allow...
No, I didn't say we'd lose it.
Oh, sorry.
I just said, you know, I don't know that we have another opportunity, based upon what I heard at the last town meeting. You know, even to do additional studies, to buy more land, I've not heard that there's land out there to buy that can accommodate these things. I've not heard a desire from the general community to buy more land for these things. I think the Plimpton issue soured a lot of people on the purchase of land. I understand the neighborhood's concerns. I've been at every public meeting on this project. I think mitigations and all those good things can be done to accommodate the neighborhood. And, you know, at the end of the day, we need a field, somewhere.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed?
Annie, I'm not opposed to it, because I don't support it generally, I just, I'm not sure this is the time.
Is that right?
And that was to place and support?
Yes.
Well, again, we'll have that number for you on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Okay, now we'll go to Article forty-eight, which will become Article forty-seven. Okay, the two men, Chapter 300 zoning bylaw of the Town of Sturbridge, by inserting a new Article 21. Jean?
Good evening. So I think at least several of you were at the public hearing last night, or, and maybe you watched it on live. So the planning board did hold the public hearing last evening, and we did receive a lot of comment, some input regarding a few minor changes to the bylaw that were made. And so I'd like to just go, oh, and I should say, the planning board voted unanimously to support the bylaw with two minor changes last night, and then I'm actually here to ask you to make another amendment this evening, because there was one question that arose from several people that I couldn't answer last night. So first of all, the, there were two minor changes, and one was to add a space between facility and caretaker in Section 300-21.4, Subparagraph B.
What page, Jean?
No page numbers. It's the second page of...
Second page.
Sorry, I didn't put page numbers on it.
Oh, there are page numbers, but they're...
Not on our pack. You're looking at Jean's copy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And it's, I think it's fourteen on the version you have now, because we also realized the numbering went a little off-kilter with the track changes that we've been doing. So on page fourteen, it's under Subparagraph, Section 300-21.4, Subparagraph B, in item number fourteen, it was missing a space between facility and caretaker, so we added a space. And then additionally, the question was raised that in one section, we had, let's see, it's on my page four, I'm not sure where it is on yours, F, we had that any structure must be 300 feet from any permanent habitable structures located outside the AOD, but within the rural residential zoning district, existing at time of adoption of this article. And then on the following page, under M, I had that you could have the manure within 125 feet. So you could have a home, but you couldn't have a home in there, but you could put your manure. So we changed, so Dane Labonte from the planning board thanked him for his good proofreading skills, so we picked up on that and agreed to that change last evening. So that was the bylaw as voted by the planning board. As I noted in an earlier email today, the numbering went off-kilter, so this version is, the numbering is correct, and will coincide with the new codification. And last night, there was an issue raised by Dane Labonte, again, a planning board member, and he questioned why we had 60% maximum impervious surface, and didn't that seem significantly higher than what was needed for a project of this magnitude? And so I, really, I came up with the number by looking at other percentage of impervious surfaces that we have in other sections of our town, in different zoning districts. And I couldn't come up on the fly of say, oh, yeah, 50% is good, or whatever that may be. So I spent the better portion of today going back and forth with the proponents, and trying to crunch some numbers, and trying to exclude wetland areas that we can't count as lot coverage. And they have agreed, we've kind of come up with a revision that we would like you to accept tonight, and that would reduce the maximum lot coverage from 35% to 30%, and then the maximum impervious surface from 60% to 40%. So I think it results in a significant reduction, and it addresses one of the concerns that was raised last night. And so I'm asking that you consider that amendment, if you vote to place the article.
Okay. Well, we can vote to accept the revision first.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on it? Somebody want to make a motion, then, to approve the revisions as submitted today?
I will make a motion to approve the revisions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. You opposed, Mary?
Well, I'll abstain, because I didn't hear the whole thing, but I haven't been, yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, so...
I'm not particularly concerned about the amendments. I'm not supporting the amendments, that's all.
Okay, so that was three, one, one. Okay, then, is there a motion about placing Article forty-eight?
Can I, can I do place and support?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to place and support Article forty-seven.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion? Okay, no discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three, two. Okay, passes.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean. Have a good night.
Good night.
Sun is still shining.
Five o'clock meeting, right?
Yeah, but it won't be that way pretty soon.
I know.
Okay, let me just flip through. Okay, the next article is Article forty-nine, two men, Chapter 300, Article Two, Section 300.2-2 of the zoning bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 300-2.2, terms defined by inserting the proposed new definition in the appropriate location, equine center, integrated facilities operating pursuant to a common coordinated plan, providing for the housing, riding, breeding, showing, study, treatment, training, and races of horses, and other equestrian-related uses, or take any action relative thereto. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article forty-nine.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, three, two. Article fifty, amend the zoning map of the Town of Sturbridge, to see if the town will vote to amend, it should be inserted there, to amend the Towning Sturbridge zoning map in the following manner, to designate as agricultural entertainment overlay district the following parcels of land, one, 180 Breakneck Road, 223 acres; two, 75.54 acres, 16 Crossroad; and three, 181 Breakneck Road, 80 acres. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article fifty.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let me just get this. Okay, any discussion?
I have a, almost like a parliamentary, my parliamentary question. So should these all just be integrated into one article? Because if we, or you can't...
Well, they go in different parts of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, so I guess if...
Yeah, because the other one is the definitions.
Yeah.
And this is not the definitions, this is located. Okay.
The way the attorney wants it.
No, no, I understand, I just, my concern would be that we've been voting for fun, so we probably should just make that clear at the meeting, I guess.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay, Article fifty-one, community preservation, outbuilding removals, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from community preservation fund, undesignated fund balance, the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of outbuilding removal of the lead mine barn, three outbuildings on the lead mine parcel, and the Heinz cabin, or take any action relative thereto. Okay, this had been explained before that...
Becky, gender's here to refresh your recollection.
I think I remember this one.
Two men in a row, Becky.
I know.
Good evening. So this is in addition to funds that we received last year. So the project was going to be completed in the spring. We do have a timing restriction related to a rare species out there, and with the conditions on the site, all the trails were icy, we weren't able to have them removed before the timing restriction. So since the pandemic and the increased costs, we did receive a change order from the contractor who was awarded the bid, and they do anticipate increased costs in the amount of approximately $5,000. So we put in a little extra, just in case there was any other increased costs, since we received that change order. And the project will be completed this fall and November, so...
Okay, thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Any unspent funds would just automatically return to community preservation, right?
Yeah, yeah, designated. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to appropriate from the community preservation fund, undesignedated fund balance in sum of $10,000 for the purpose of outbuilding removal. I'm doing it like a normal motion. I'm moving to support.
Place and support.
I was doing it like we're typical.
I was waiting for that S. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five, two...
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Yes, you too, Becky.
We can all support Taryn, thanks, though.
Okay, Article fifty-two, community preservation, Grand Trunk Trail construction, see if the town will vote to appropriate from the community preservation fund, undesignedated fund balance, the sum of $92,000 to fund the construction of a portion of the Grand Trunk Trail in Sturbridge, or take any action relative thereto.
I can explain this one. And CPC's meeting tomorrow to review this as well. The Grand Trunk Trail project, which we got the earmark for a decade or so ago, is an ongoing project, and to the benefit of Times Chamberlain and the Trails Committee, has received numerous grants over the years, and now we have Eastern Federal Lands, who is now administering the project, and is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering. There's four people getting paid out of this deal. And then as we move into construction of three quarters of a mile of trail, the construction engineering cost will be over $200,000. Any, so we went to, and we're short now, even with all the new money we've gotten, we're short $250,000 to build this three quarters of a mile. So we're up near $2 million total. So we went to Federal Lands, Tom, the Trail Committee and I, and said, what if we took the project? You've done the plans, we'll take the project, we'll hire the appropriate engineers, we'll bid it, and all those good things, and we'll save all those extras, because not only would they have a person on site, but we got to pay for their housing, their food, eighty construction days, $200,000 in cost, okay? We'll take it, we'll hire an engineer, they'll be on site every day, but they'll go home at night, you know, all those good things. So instead of being short $250,000, if we take the project, we'll be short $92,000. So the Trail Committee is recommending the town assume the project with the plans that have been developed. Eastern Federal Lands is okay with that, there'll be some paperwork going back and forth, but that'll be how we build that trail.
It's actually going to get built, finally.
I'm just saying, that's the next plan, right?
It's getting closer.
It's getting closer.
Yeah, nice trail.
At least we spent a lot of money on it.
I mean, it's been a long time, we came about with the iced tea back, and I was on the open space committee then.
I know, iced tea was a long time ago.
Yeah.
It melted by now.
So this will connect it, oh, my apologies.
No, go ahead.
So this will connect it from basically the Calcat Bridge to...
River Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, to River Road.
Yeah, so then you, then you go right forward to the, so it kind of, you, so you have to go on the road there, but then you go to the OSB trails, so it sort of connects that.
Sure.
From Westville, right?
From Westville, so basically Westville all the way to the underwear, the lead mine trails, and...
Yep. Let's just make that T a D, Grand Trunk, right? It's usually Mary's call.
Yeah.
I know, Mary, you fell down.
If you wouldn't mind, I cleaned my glasses, too.
Do I have a T in the wrong spot, or D?
Yes.
Well, it's sort of the Grand Trunk.
Where'd I put that?
On page...
Oh, great, yeah, okay, I see it.
Yeah.
You know, every time you read it, someone's going to find something else, happens. But, yeah, that's kind of the story on that. But the plans are at 95% now, so they should be completed soon, so we could bid this, hopefully, in building spring, hopefully, hopefully.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to place and support Article fifty-two.
I'll second them, oh, go ahead, Chase. I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. Article fifty-three, funding for a police union contract, see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of money to the following accounts, fiscal year 2021 salaries and wage retro account, fiscal year 2021 overtime retro account, fiscal year 2022 salaries and wages, fiscal year 2022 salaries and wages, or take any action relative thereto.
The new version that's on the podium has some numbers in it. There should be a newer, a newer version of the notes.
Yeah, we have this.
Two, one, and zero.
Yeah.
But you'll see, you're going to talk about this overall on Monday.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you all approve it on Monday, we can get it on the town meeting... And, you know, if you all approve it on Monday, we'll get it on the town meeting and get everybody trued up.
Right. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I was going to say, I'll move to place and support this...would it be pending our meeting on Monday?
Yeah.
So pending the Board of Selectmen approval on Monday.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay, five.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you.
Okay, Article fifty-four, funding for the construction of a public parking lot at five zero one Main Street, Sturbridge. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a public parking lot located at five zero one Main Street in Sturbridge, or take any action relative thereto. Okay, rather self-explanatory.
The three hundred is...we have a fifty thousand dollar earmark from the state budget through Senator Gobie's office, so that...so the real cost is somewhere around three fifty. But that money's been...the paperwork for that is in my office. I just have to fill it out, so...
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article fifty-four.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
And how many spots is that going to get us, again? You had mentioned...
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. With handicap, two large hand...
Two handies.
That'll be paid parking, correct?
Paid, lit, paid.
Paid, as in it'll cost people money?
No.
It might be a good idea.
It's a very popular position to take.
Parking's never free, right?
Right.
Don't you work in West Virginia, Amy?
Okay, so that is the end of the article. Somebody want to make a motion and close the warrant?
Before we close it, can I just ask something? I'm sorry if I'm talking...I feel like my mouth...I just got out of dental procedure, and I feel like my mouth is about this big, so if I'm lisping and stuff, it's because I'm still having local anesthesia. Anyway, I'm wondering, is it...can we still add articles? Is it too late to...
No, if we close the warrant, there's no more articles. We can open the warrant...
Well, I just didn't...
To change numbers and things.
Okay, so...
Up until it's posted.
All right, before...that's what I thought. Before we close it, I just want to know what the board thinks about putting a placeholder for the CPC, Community Preservation, to possibly fund some of the senior center more...because it is historical building. And I had spoken with the chair, and she seemed demented to discussing it at a committee meeting. So that will, you know, reduce the cost by whatever they're willing to...
No, that would be...we don't need a special article for that.
We usually have it.
I don't know. We can check their meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So they're talking about funding for the multi-use field, multi-use field and the senior center, so whatever they produced, we were going to include in your warrants for Monday.
Oh, you are going to do it?
Yeah. It's listed in the wording, too, that, you know, we'll take money from you, Mary, we'll take from Jamie, we'll take from wherever.
Oh, okay.
The red-dowling reading room bit.
Yeah, there you go. I don't even have dental insurance. What was I going to say? Because I think in the past, sometimes we've had it as a separate article. And then I also think it'd be nice for residents to see that we're trying to draw the money from as many sources as we can to bring down...
We'll have to tell them, don't worry.
Yeah, so anyway, see, we're going to bring it up anyway, Jeff, so...
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to close the warrant?
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Discussion?
Actually, get dinner with my wife, then.
Before we adjourn, can I ask one question?
No.
It's not...it's just...so we're actually going, if it gets approved, we're going to be rezoning three hundred and seventy-eight acres. And I was just curious why we always use the two hundred and twenty-three. Is that just because that's the size of the equine center itself? Because actually, that's just...what is it, one fifty or one fifty-one breakneck is two twenty-three, but there's two other parcels we're rezoning. So I just didn't know why we're always saying two twenty-three instead of three seventy-eight.
If you look at...there's three parcels.
Yeah.
Two on one side of Breakneck Road and one on the other.
Yeah.
The one that's on the right side of Breakneck Road, if you're looking at the map, they're not using it for anything. So it's going to be part of the rezoning, but none of the equestrian facility is on it. So even your motion to cite the equestrian facility only includes the two parcels on the one side of Breakneck Road. So there'll be no gambling-type operation on that third parcel at all.
Oh, I get it. But we're still rezoning all three.
Because it may include the ball fields, may go there.
Right, but it's still part of the overlay district. Okay, so the one across the street...
You're not really rezoning, you're creating an overlay.
Overlay.
Sorry.
You're not really rezoning, you're creating an overlay.
I understand the distinction, but we're allowing something that wasn't previously allowed.
You have to be recognized by the chair, sir.
So the eighty acres is just going to...is on the other side of the road?
Yeah.
And what about the seventy-five on crossroad? Is that...
Those two parcels are all part of the project. There's two parcels.
Okay, so still, two twenty-three and seventy-five, so it's three hundred acres. I've just had people ask me about the inconsistency, and so it's not really two twenty-three. It's two twenty-three, which is one eighty breakneck, and seventy-five, which is sixteen crossroad. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Okay, did we have a motion to adjourn?